I'm looking at the memorandum from the last. This month and the last two months, I'm really confused. But I think last month we got a correction or something on it.
Yeah, I don't think he was right and I requested Nicole for a new one. I think she sent it part of the package, I believe.
I got one for July thirty first here, but.
Uh, there is one for June as well.
Yeah, this is July, so I'm just looking for June.
In the packet?
Uh, yeah.
Actually, it's the just the monthly revenue report. I don't know if it was in the packet, though.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, the, 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 the report, he's looking for the memorandum.
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't know.
We can ask Nicole, Mike.
Sure, I, yeah, I don't, I'm not even. Sure, until I look here in my old emails, if I can look up what that corrected one was. Seven nine.
It still baffles me how. Wichita lot is up so much and then Smishney continues to be down.
Uh, Mike was asking about that, too. I don't know if. They're doing something a little wrong over there, or. Uh, it, it really doesn't make much sense, but.
No, it doesn't.
Cause it's kinda, it was full the whole time, but. I don't know.
Well, you know, and it was either a year ago or two years ago that. You know, like, we'd have to look back in the notes, but. There was times when that parking lot wasn't even open. Uh, some, sometimes. Kinda during all that construction and stuff.
Right, yeah, that was two years ago. It wasn't.
Was messed up by the construction.
Or, or wasn't easily available, readily available.
Right. And that whole area was like a war zone down there anyway.
Yes.
Okay, so let me see if Barzati is here, too.
I am, I'm here.
Hey, Mike, how are you?
Doing well. How are you guys?
We are doing well. All right, let's see if. Elena is here as well. Hi, Kristen, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing well. Good seeing you. Hi, Elena.
Hey, Jimmy, how's it going?
It's going. Let me just get to the packets. Did you wanna do the, um. Roll call for us? It's, uh, Men into Springs Metropolitan District Regular Meeting Agenda. We are August fourteen. And it is three thirty four. Um. Ralph Jacobson is gonna be excused today. He did email and had something to do. Uh, so it's gonna be, uh, the four of us, and for the record, Larry and I are in the same room. Uh, I, I don't think we need to log in separately, but if we do, let us know, okay? Making sure. Okay, would you do the roll call for us, please?
Yes, all right, uh, Director Larry Fox.
Here.
Director Mike Graham.
Here.
Secretary Michael Barzati.
Here.
And Chairman Shemis Shlomo.
Uh, yeah, I'm here.
Alright.
Thank you. Um, all right, approval of the agenda. Um, is everyone okay with the agenda the way it is?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to. Mike, did you have a problem?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda the way it is in our packet.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, any vote? That would be four to zero. Thank you. Um, all right, so consent calendar, we got July ten, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes. Um. It's. Anyone have a problem with those? Um, I, I'll just mention that there was a confusion about, uh, the report. Uh, so we're gonna approve the reports today. As opposed to last time.
I wa- I was thinking if we're, are we still looking at the minutes? The minutes, are we, are, are we doing something else?
Uh, we're looking at the minutes from July ten.
Right. So, well, I just think that, uh. We should add somehow that, uh. You know, Roy couldn't come to that meeting because he didn't have early enough notice. To attend the meeting, but. Uh, the meeting's the second, second Wednesday of every month, and we moved it to the second Wednesday for Roy. Remember, we used to be the first, first Wednesday of the month, so I think we should. Probably make a note that if he didn't know there was a meeting, maybe we need to. Put it on his calendar or something.
Okay, duly noted, uh.
You bet.
I believe. Soon enough, it won't be, uh, an issue since we're going different ways. Um, all right, back to the minutes. Anything else on the minutes, Mike, or did you wanna?
Nope, that's all. I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I ask for clarification on that? I'm sorry. Did you guys, did you guys wanna amend the minutes in that motion to make sure that that part was added?
Uh, Mike, did you wanna, should we do that?
We don't need to do that. We don't have to do that, but maybe. Well, no, we don't need to amend it.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, say aye then?
Aye.
Aye, that would be Barzati. Okay, that would be four to zero. Thank you. Uh, okay, reports, we have the June twenty twenty four parking report. Um. Mike, did you wanna start with that? We had a little bit. Of a couple of questions over there. I'm trying to find the right papers real quick.
You mean, you mean as far as. Uh, Smishney, Smishney coming out lower than last year every month, or?
Yeah, you can start with that and ask.
Oh, I'm just curious, is James here? Are you here, James?
I'm here, can you hear me okay?
Do you think that maybe? Why do you think Smishney's down every month? Is it, are we counting? The mobile paying at Smishney and are we counting it under Wichita?
No, so that, that's, it's, it's being counted under Smishney. Um, if I had to make assumptions. Um, I, I would say that overall, um. Transaction wise, uh, we've been down at periods throughout. Uh, Manitou as a whole, um. And, uh. And that's not everywhere, and that's not all the time, but there's been periods during this year where we had. Ultimately slower years. Uh, uh, a slower year than in previous years. Um, we also have been incentivizing. The parking on the, uh, on East End, the, the three hundred block more heavily. So we're, we're currently offering that parking for, for two dollars, all day parking. Um, and that's, that's been getting filled, whereas for, uh, that parking remains largely empty. Um, so I don't know if that's. That's taking some of those folks away from that end of town, um. Uh, most of, of what we've been. Trying to do is get people to, to utilize parking on the East End and ride the shuttles into town. Um, that's been, been our focus. And a big point of emphasis was, it, it was incentivizing that three, uh, three and four hundred blocks. Of Manitou Avenue for parking. Um, but other than that, that's, that's just my best guess.
Mm-hmm. Well, Wichita, Wichita was up thirty eight percent.
Yeah, yeah, that was a, a big jump. Part of it was the, the, the rate increase, um, but. Uh, like I said, we, we definitely had a busy, busy June, um. Uh, in, in some places, I think we were busier in June than we were in July, um. But, uh, um, yeah, so it's, it's been. Uh, we're, we're definitely seeing. A, a little bit of a slowdown, um. Compared to kind of what we were experiencing over the last half years.
Okay, Shemi, you got anything? I'm, I'm, that's all I have.
James, where, where, where is your two dollar for all day parking?
That's the, um, the four hundred block of Manitou Avenue, and then, uh. And then we, uh, advertise free parking in the three hundred block of Manitou.
Right, that's on, on street parking or off street?
It's on street parking.
Oh, okay.
Just before, it wasn't getting used, because we had just, we brought it up to a standard like hourly rate. And, and nobody was using that parking down there. Um, it was, it was empty for the most part. Really, the only people using it was. Uh, the, the auto shop place, um, and the, the ski chair boat. Um, so we've, we, we put that in place to give people that, that wanna be here long term and, and wanna pay a lower rate. Uh, we've been charging two dollars all day parking in that area to try to, to incentivize people to park.
That's why that area is all filled up.
Yes, sir.
When I come into town.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's the stark contrast compared to. Previous years where it was, it was largely empty.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that. Any other questions for? James on the June parking report?
Just, just as a kind of a curiosity thing. Uh, once again, I noticed that the citations. Approximately half of them are for expired registration. What, is that something that we're required to report? Or give a citation for, or is that something that the city encourages, or what?
It is a, the city ordinance, um, and, uh, that was put into place. Uh, to, to combat abandoned vehicles. Um, it's also just been, uh, a pretty wide spread issue. Um, and especially after a, a lot of the extra allowances that were. Uh, uh, in place for COVID, uh, because folks couldn't get into the B and B, so. Uh, after that, we've, there's. It's been an issue with getting folks to, to register those vehicles and keep them current. Um, so we, we do enforce it, um, and we, the, the city ordinance is specifically for proof of vehicle registration, so. That's having license plates on the vehicle, and if your state requires it. The, the regstate, uh, stration stickers, uh, affixed to the vehicle as well. Um, there's some states that, that don't require it, and we, we don't enforce on those vehicles, um. But that, that is something that we, we do. If we see it, we write it. Um, and, and we have written a lot of those, uh, over the last couple of years.
Yeah, uh, let me, let me just make sure I understand. This is a city ordinance that you're required to give a. Citation for?
So, uh, it, we're not required to really write any citations. Um, we, we do have discretion to write. The citations that we write, but it is a city ordinance, and we do enforce.
Okay. And do, who gets to keep the? Citation money, James? On, on, you know, the city does get to keep that, and then on our lots, we get to keep it? Is that what's going on?
That's correct. Any, any tickets that are written in the, the Smishney or Wichita lot, that revenue goes to Metro.
All right, okay, thank you. Um. All right, now we got the July twenty twenty four parking report, um, I believe. That we kinda covered everything, but if there is anything else, Mike? We're good on that, I believe. Um. All right, we got. June twenty twenty four finance report. Hi, Nicole. And Becca, I think I've seen Becca before, too. Uh, we can hear you, Nicole?
Yeah, just a little bit, um.
Can't hear, we can't hear you. We'll give Nicole a couple more seconds. Seeing Nicole can hear us, we can't hear her. My guess is she's gonna go across the hall to Elena or Kristen. That would be my guess.
Yeah, she's coming in right now. So I don't know why it's not working, but. I'm here. I won't be able to pull up the finance report, so you'll have to look at it.
Okay. All right. Questions for Nicole? Um, I'll start. Uh, did we pay, we did pay the asbestos, uh, mitigation last, was it last month, Nicole?
It was last month.
Okay, did we pay anything else? Uh, so what else did we pay? Was it the engineer or not yet?
The engineer, no, that's gonna be next week.
Okay.
That check is going to be probably printed on Friday and sent out on, or picked up on Monday.
Okay, so. I got way too many papers here, and I'm having a difficulty, but, um, we have June and July revenues. And I believe. We had only an increase of how much? Was it, Mike? Five thousand dollars from the last time we had?
It wasn't very much, and I thought, well, maybe that was all the pain for the asbestos removal or something, but. You know, what's.
Yeah, fifty five thousand in June, and then there's a seventy thousand one in July.
Uh.
Okay.
Seventy, uh. Seventy seven thousand in July. Those are the two. Two big things that, I don't know what the.
Okay.
The, the fifty five thousand is the asbestos mitigation. Can you verify what the seventy thousand is, Nicole?
I can't do it right now. I'll have to have that for the next one, because I'm not at my desk with my financial software.
Okay, Becca, could you? Or, uh, it's not, it's, you can't do that? Well, you're, you're, you're muted, you're muted.
Can she look at her, yeah?
I can either be on a meeting, or I can get into my, uh. Uh, into Casell, but I cannot do both at the same time. I have to unplug everything and get onto just the laptop to, to get into, to Zoom meetings.
We've got printed, I mean, we had got a packet from Elena. Can't we look at the packet?
Yeah, it does. It says seventy seven thousand for professional services in July. I was just curious what all that was. What that was for, what professional services?
Yeah, I, and I'm afraid that. For some reason, my speaker's not working, so I cannot access that and be in the meeting at the same time. I'm so sorry.
Here, I can.
Okay.
I, here, I'm, I'm pulling it up. Uh. I can't see the meeting or anything, but I'm pulling this up. So what's the account line? Um, what's it start with?
It's going to be seven four four nine nine, uh.
Three twenty.
Twenty for professional services.
Number three twenty.
Thank you for the effort.
Okay, so I'm looking at this account line. There's the Mile High. Hmm, I see the fifty five thousand six fifty five. But I don't see anything in July. Oh, the seventy seven one seventy six is the total of that account line, so. Uh, you got fifty five thousand six fifty five is the big expenditure, then back in April, you had, uh, one thousand fifty for Holtigan Company for your extension from audit. And then you have fourteen thousand three eighty one from Division Two Demo and Dirt. Did you have something demolished?
Not yet.
Well, you. So, well, here, let me look at the.
How much, how much do we pay Hodeling?
Oh, Uptown Motel Furnishing and Carpet Removal Fence and Board Up Windows and Doors.
Yeah, yeah.
It's fourteen thousand three eighty one, and then in February, you paid L T S Resources LLC, five thousand nine sixty five. That was full demo inspection.
Those invoices are coming to us from Shemi, so.
So, yeah, but when you add all that up. When you add up Lock and Key, L T S, Holtigan Company, Division Two Demo, and Mile High Environmental. The total is seventy seven thousand one seventy six. You do not have an invoice for that amount. That is the total of all those invoices.
And that's the confusion, okay?
Okay, perfect, yeah.
So, so, so let me just ask this. When I look at the memo that we got on six ten.
Okay, so I wanna interrupt here, Mike, on that. That memo only shows, uh, that it was not updated with the June revenues. We.
Well, that's for the next memo. That's the memo in July. So the June one, the forty, uh, seventy four fund is five hundred ninety thousand. Then the July one is a hundred and eighty one thousand, so that's a hundred and nine thousand less. And then the new one is five hundred ninety six thousand. The one for today. So it, it's awful confusing.
If you wanna come in, we can go over these one by one. Uh, all of the revenues were not in by the time I left on the third, so those not, did not get in for the meeting.
Okay, I think we should do that, Mike, so it's kinda clears it.
I think, I think if we do, I think we'll be in trouble with Roy and Denise.
Why?
The way things are going, according to this letter that Roy had put in the packet and, uh. You know, they just don't want us to talk to you guys, I guess, which is really weird. But that's the, that's what I get when I read it. So. I don't know, we mustn't, we might need permission to come talk to you now.
Uh, I think, Mike, I think if we schedule with Nicole, it will be, it'll be okay. I've never, I was never.
It should be.
Back from Nicole, she'd be always.
No, it should be, it should be.
My, Roy, I, I can answer that. You're welcome to reach out to them instead of, of appointment to talk to them anytime.
Okay, good, good. That's good.
Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, thanks, Roy. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
So we got, um, finance reports as well. We do have some questions, maybe, uh. Maybe we can just walk in, Mike, we'll, we'll sell Nicole, um, an email and. Um, she can help us with that. If you're good with that, I'm good with that.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Awesome. Let's, uh, move on if everyone is okay?
You bet.
Uh, did we wanna move, uh, approve all these reports? Uh, or do you wanna wait till next month after we talk to Nicole, Mike?
Oh, I think we can, I think we could approve them if we, uh. Long as we can figure this deal out, I mean. Um. It would just be nice to see, you know, if, well. Let's just meet with Nicole. Let's approve them now and then meet with Nicole on it when we can. You bet.
I'll, I'll make, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the parking and finance report for June and July of twenty twenty four. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that would be four to zero. All right, um. Presentation, we got the Metro District Hiring Process Memorandum. Um. Did you put this on, Larry? Or?
Was that, did I put it on? No.
Yeah.
Uh.
Uh, Elena, did you add this on, or? Or is that, uh, is that why Kelly here?
That's why Kelly's here.
Okay. Hi, Kelly. She's on mute, and I'm not sure if she's there, but, uh. Um. So, we'll, we'll give her a couple more minutes, but I think, and I, and I don't wanna. I don't wanna insult her and just stop her from giving us this, uh, hiring process. Memorandum, but, uh, I don't think we're gonna hire anyone soon, um. But. If she's here, we'll let her speak real quick. Kelly, are you with us?
Apologize, I had a phone call.
No worries.
So what was the question?
Um, so, I, I guess you're doing a, a, a hiring process memorandum, but, and, and I don't wanna take. You know, anything from you, but I don't think we're gonna hire anyone anytime soon, plus. Um, it seems like the city and Metro are going different ways. We're not gonna have employees, uh, very soon. Um, so this might be, uh, not needed, but if, if there is something specific that you would like to make sure we know. Um, I'll be happy to hear it and get educated.
Well, I had just wanted to, to send you the process in the event that you do, do any hiring. Um, it's self-explanatory. If there's no questions about it, then I think that. You know, you just having it on file. So that if you do have future hires between now and the, the sunsetting of this. Partnership, then I will be glad to answer any. Otherwise, it's pretty straightforward on, and what we need to do. To make sure that we hire staff. In the best way possible, so that we can serve you guys better.
Well, thank you for that. Um, I'll definitely save it. Um, but like I said, I'm pretty sure we're not gonna have anyone. And if we will, I will make sure to follow, to follow what you sent me, a hundred percent.
Okay, perfect. All right. All right.
Thank you.
All you need from me, Becca?
Um, I believe so, unless anyone have a, 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 a question or an issue, Mike, both mics, or Larry?
No, I was good with it. Thank you for, for the information.
Okay, you're welcome, and I'm always available to you. Have, um, my contact information, I'm sure. So if you have any questions, feel free to reach out, but otherwise, I'm gonna go ahead and. Take the rest of my afternoon and get some other work done.
You, you'll enjoy it. Thank you. Thank you so much for that.
So much. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right, uh, new business. Discussion and potential action concerning separation of the Metropolitan District from the city. All right, uh, new business, discussion and potential action concerning separation of the Metropolitan District from the city. I think uh it's known now that we're gonna separate and go different ways. Uh, I believe we're waiting for just a letter uh that would uh come from uh the city, uh which will be probably more professional and we just got it. Um, I, I just, I just saw it uh in my email. So I'll forward it to everyone else. I'm not sure if everyone else were tagged. I didn't have time to check, but I will forward to all the board members. Uh, we do, we do have that letter now. So um, we probably should uh vote on that. Um, I know Ralph is not here. Uh, we do have a quorum though. So do we wanna, do we want to do that right now?
Yes, I don't see any reason uh why to uh, just for the record, Shimmy and uh Mike Graham and myself did meet with uh Roy and uh
Denise.
And uh Juan and other city officials.
Denise.
To get a uh, uh, gotta take a pulse of what uh everybody was feeling. And it was, it was mutually just uh agreed upon that, that us separating from the city would be beneficial to both of us. And uh, so I don't see uh any reason to uh postpone thinking or talking about that further. And so I would be prepared to make a motion that we separate ourselves from the city. And I'd like to hear from uh Mike and Mike about that.
Yeah, I think it's been coming for a long time. Um, sure, yeah, I, I would be all about it.
And I agree with that.
All right.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we uh, the Manitou Metro District uh separate itself from the city. Uh managing our parking lots and our, our meetings. Our finances and the meetings. In other words, uh, we would separate totally from the city.
I'll second.
I would further say that we do this uh January first of twenty twenty five.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
I would have, I would have said we should pick the last day of the year, but first day of next year, I guess is okay, but.
Um, we can, we can amend that.
I mean, would it be okay if we said midnight on, on December thirty first?
Okay, yeah, I was thinking we start on January first, but we, since it is an ending, uh you would be right, Mike, that we should end it on December thirty first.
Let's do that. If, if that's okay with you guys to amend it that way.
Yes.
Hey, this is Roy, just to let you know, the agreement does state, Mike, what you said. So basically it would be the midnight of the end of the year and then starting January first of twenty twenty five, you would be uh, then we would be parted, you'd be on your own. So you, you got it right.
Thank you, Roy. Is, is, was that uh clear enough, Kristen? Is that, are we good? That was four to zero?
Yeah.
Okay, there were, there were none opposed, right? Okay, all right. Thank, thank you for that. All right, the next thing is uh discussion and potential action, hiring Pinnacle Consultants of Denver as the Metropolitan District Managing Partner.
Hey, hey, Shemmy, real, real quick, can I just say one thing? I, I want to let.
Absolutely.
That we are here as a city to help with a smooth transition. Um, so please let, let us know how we can help, uh to make sure everything works out for you all, because we want you to be successful. So just so you know, we are here to try to help with that transition.
I appreciate that personally, and I'm sure everyone else is too. Thank you.
Yes, I would second that. Uh, Roy, thank you very much for the help that you've been already uh to us. And uh, uh, and, and, and any help you might be able to give us through this transition.
You, you bet. And, and you know, we're partners in parking, so uh we want everything to work out. We, we do need you all. You have good parking spots for the city. And so again, just reach out anytime. Um, and we'll always be able to try to help and give us, give you our opinion. And we may ask you for your opinion at times. So, so again, appreciate the collaboration as we move forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Discussion and potential action, hiring Pinnacle Consultant as uh of Denver as the Metropolitan District Managing Partner. Larry, you want to take this one?
Uh, yes, we have uh, I think Jason appeared before us at one point.
Uh, sure.
Yes, I don't remember which month it was, but uh Jason from Pinnacle Consultants did uh give us a, a presentation. There, I, I would recommend, after having gone to the uh small district convention last uh October, I believe it was, uh, in, in interviewing uh various consulting firms that deal with special districts. I, it, it pinnacle production would be my pinnacle uh consultants would, would be my recommendation uh for who to hire. They're experienced in managing special districts and they have uh all of the support groups, uh legal, financial backing to, to do this sort of, to, to manage us. And we're really a kind of a small potato in their big scheme of things, but we are a potato. And uh, and so I would recommend Pinnacle Consultants over any of the other firms that I, I believe I told you about three different ones in my report last November. And uh Pinnacle would be my recommendation. They charge uh basically by the hour. And I'll, I'll uh deal more with that if you uh if, if the board votes to, to hire them.
All right, thank you, Larry. I met, I met Jason as well, um, and uh I, I do recommend going forward with that specific company. So we can go forward um and, and, and have a replacement for uh, for the city. Mike, any questions or did you guys, are, are you guys okay with uh going forward with that, with this specific uh, uh company? Pinnacle Consultants. Uh, you're both muted.
I, I defer to your guys' judgment, so uh, yeah, that sounds good to me.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, and I would agree with whatever you guys decide since uh you're informed on it and I am really not very informed on that. So I will go with what you guys recommend.
Okay, thank you. Uh, part of, part of the reason why uh we just have to fill you up, I feel is like because we, 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 when we meet, if there is three of us together, it's considered a meeting and we have to kind of publish it. So we, we, we go and do a little bit of work before, um, and we bring it to you, just, just for the record. Um, and, and since if we are gonna go forward like we, I think we are, then we can go back to Jason and he can send us a more uh thorough report uh that we, we will definitely forward everyone on the board. Um, all right, did anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we hire Pinnacle Production, Pinnacle, excuse me, Pinnacle Consultants of Denver as our uh Metropolitan District Managing Partner.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? That would be four to zero. Thank you. Um, our next uh subject is uh, we have to discuss which bank the Metropolitan District should use once separated from the city. Um, these are, these are questions that are, you know, will come up uh pretty soon. Um, and um we have uh, or I, I, I have relationship with uh several different banks. You know, usually how I choose is the proximity. You know, Ant, Ant is a great bank, um, and, and I'd recommend them, um, Ant Federal Credit Union. Um, another really good one is uh First Bank. I believe um, First Bank was brought up by Pinnacle Consultant and was uh, you know, they, they, they uh, they have a relationship with them as well. I'm okay with any bank, um, as, as, as long as it would kind of make sense. I, I really don't want to have someone that has two branches in Colorado Springs and it's all the way over on the east side. So in case we need something, we gotta drive all the way. Um, so for me, it would be either Ant Federal Credit, Credit Union or First Bank. Or a, or another one that you guys will come up with. Uh, what's your thoughts?
I like Ant. I have a business and personal accounts with them and they are close, so that would be my vote.
Okay, Mike?
They're, they're just a huge, huge bank, even though they're a credit union rather than a bank. But uh, I've been a member there for thirty five or forty years and never had any trouble. So I think they're a good, a good bank.
Can I speak?
Absolutely.
You'll have to check on state laws because we were interested in, the city was interested in looking at using it. And we were told we could not because we're a municipality, but I don't know if that applies to special districts. So.
Okay, that's a great feedback.
Just be aware that you might want to check with them first before you make a decision tonight. If, if you're thinking you're gonna choose it, double check with them first.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so maybe that's why um Jason was recommending First Bank, maybe they, they work better. But how about um, we could go forward and say, um, you know, that, that we will go with uh, or, or we can push it to next month, actually. You know, I, I don't want to limit, limit ourselves to uh two banks and then come back and both of them telling me I can't have it. So um, I think it would be wise if we push it one more, one more month. Um, just, just as, as far as you guys know, um, I will try to go to both banks and do a little bit of research. Um, if one of them will say, okay, just so you know, I will uh, I, I, I will probably uh go with one of those uh options, either, either Ant or First Bank would be my first option. So um, I'll move it, I'll move it to uh September uh agenda as well. All right, the next discussion, is everyone okay with that? I'm sorry. Uh, I just, okay, thank you, Mike.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Okay, next uh is discussion regarding an open house at the Youth Pass Motel. Mike, you want to take that one?
Yep, I'll uh, you know, this was an idea I had a couple months ago. And I thought maybe we should open up the fence at the Youth Pass Motel and let the public in to look at it, so they kind of know what we're dealing with. And uh, just want to know what you guys think of the idea. And I don't know if we'd want to do it in September or October, or, you know, even if we, if we decide to do it. But I think, you know, if people were to see and smell and uh look at the building, I think a lot of people would form some strong opinions pretty, pretty directly. And it may help support us in trying to get those buildings demolished. But uh, if any, if any of the folks have any question about whether they should go or not, I recommend they go in the basement of that first le- left building and smell and they'll all come screaming out of there. But you know, that was just my thought was to let the public, I guess uh, you know, we can't talk to the city council, we can't talk to the uh planning or the historic preservation people, but I think we can still talk to our neighbors and our, the people that live in Manitou and let them look at it. So just what, you know, whatever you guys think.
Um, any thoughts, Larry? Should I, should I go first?
Well, I'm just thinking of the logistics of that. We have it chained off, fenced off. And uh uh, just the logistics of what, having people tour inside the buildings, what kind of uh liabilities might we be opening ourselves up to? I, I don't know, but it seems like we would be opening, I mean, somebody goes in there and scratches themselves on a nail. That's exposed. Are we liable for an infection they may get? I, I don't know. I, I, I'm, and then my other question is, have we really had any pushback from the uh population of Manitou, from the general public about what we're doing? I'm not in town, so I don't really hear that.
The only one that would be able to tell us that would be someone from the city, uh, like maybe uh, uh Roy or uh Denise. I'm not, I'm not sure if they got any feedback, letters, phone calls. And, and if they, they, they did, then um, it would be nice, nice to know. I did get an email uh from uh one person that's inquiring and asking questions. And I've been talking to him. Um, I, I think I just emailed him back. Um, and I, I, I've told him I'll be happy to meet with him and we can, we can talk about it, uh about any questions that he has uh about this, this Youth Pass Motel. Uh, so that's, that's on, not necessarily a complaint, uh, but he did inquire. I believe he said years ago he wanted to buy it and he wanted to renovate it. Well, sad part that he didn't and now there is someone else that have plans for the, for the, for the property. Um, so uh, I, I would be happy to meet with him. And he knows it. I gave him my cell phone number and uh, if he does next week, I will meet with him. Uh, so that's, that's, that's on that. I'm not sure if the city got anything. I don't know if Roy can answer that. Roy, are you still with us?
Yeah, I'm with you. Um, I, I, I don't know any details. I know there probably was a few inquiries about the property and what's going on, um, but I don't know any details of that. Um, but I will also tell you that we opened up Hiawatha for the public to view. Um, and if you guys want to go that route, my suggestion is that you, number one, um, you do it as kind of a tour type thing. You have someone showing them around so you can uh navigate it and, and make sure people are safe. Uh, why they, you know, where you want them to go and where you don't want them to go. Um, and it is a controlled environment versus just leaving something open for them to do it on.
That's right.
Yeah, so I would look at that and then see if your insurance covers to any incidental injuries or anything that occurs during the tour, but. By your insurance, probably.
We could limit that. Uh, actually, we could limit it to like uh maybe uh five, five people at a time. And then just, you know, that way there's not like thirty five, forty people in one room. So that's, that's another possibility.
Yeah, limit it and maybe only offer a couple days of it or something, you know, for a certain period of time. At least you're attempting to offer time and for people to take a look. Yeah, and the other part, I don't know for sure on what exactly were the inquiries about the property. But we did, I, I believe I understood we had a couple of people ask questions.
Okay, Roy, what kind of a turnout did you have for Hiawatha?
Oh, I, I think we probably had, um, oh, I, I think over, over, over thirty folks came eventually to that. Uh, we set up lighting inside there so it was safe to walk. We had someone, we actually had it set up to uh talk about and present the building itself and answer questions. Um, so it was pretty, it was a pretty good setup, um, in there and, and we made it as safe as possible.
Um, a question for you, Roy. Um, if we're gonna do something like that, I'd like to use it as well for, to invite the HPC. Um, but since I can't speak to any of them, uh, who will be my contact to try and have them come out as well? Is that gonna be Fred from Planning? Because if we are gonna do an open house like that, I wanna make sure that they will be there as well. So they're, they're not gonna request that in, in, in a month or two and delay even more. Uh, this is gonna be a one-time thing. Everyone shows up, they look at it and, um, you know, we move on. It, 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 how, how would I set that up?
I, I would just email Fred and probably copy Denise or, you know, email both of them saying that you have interest and maybe letting them know on your open dates that you, and then they can, I don't know if they can or cannot do that, but I think as long as, uh, you're not, uh, probably talking to them one-on-one, I don't know those rules, but I think you, it could be available like you would with anyone, they can go in. I'm assuming that would probably be okay, but, uh, the, the big deal is that if you get, suddenly get, uh, three or more, then it's considered a meeting, and so that has to be looked at, but, um, but I would reach out to Fred.
That's, that's, that's why I was, that's why I, I'm thinking about setting it up. If we are gonna do something like that, then the setup will be at different times. Each one of them, each HPC, uh, uh, board member will be on a different group, and that way there is no two or three, there's not three, basically, uh, showing up at the same time.
Yeah, that, that, uh, could work possibly. So, yeah, email Fred and Denise and just ask, hey, you'd like to be able to let them know on some open dates and is that okay to do? And if they have any recommendations to make sure that, that we're on the up and up on how it's managed.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Welcome.
Mike?
Yes.
Do you have something? Or you, you're?
Oh, no, no, well, all I was gonna say was, we could maybe reduce our liability on an open house by either posting a sign at the entrance, uh, like they used to do at the ski areas. I'm sure now it's probably a billboard, but just warning people that there might be some certain risks. And, uh, or we could print out, uh, waivers that would have to be signed to go on the property. You know, either way to reduce the liability and I guess it just depends on how, how concerned we are that somebody is gonna hurt themselves while they're on our property. I, I'm, I'm not very concerned, but I guess it could happen.
Uh, if someone wants to delay this process more, I think it's a possibility, but, um, let's, let's hope it's not gonna get to that, so.
So maybe we need a, a waiver or a sign or whatever, but we might have to have an attorney to find out.
Okay, so how about we will move this as well or bring it up again in a future meeting? Uh, maybe in September, do a little bit of homework on that and come back to it.
Sounds good.
Alright, okay, so no action on, on that, no action on the bank as well. Um, alright, uh, number five and the last item is discussion about changing the Metropolitan District Address. Um, this was, be honest with you, uh, I think it's kinda resolved. Um, it, it was, it was for the actual letter that, uh, the city was about to send to us, since the address for the metro is the city, is, uh, six oh six Manitou Ave. Uh, I was asked, uh, if we can change the address. Um, I, I gave, just for a one-time use, I gave, uh, Elena and, uh, Kristen my, my address so I can get the letter and, uh, the city is basically fulfilling, uh, what they're supposed to do. Um, their, their commitment and, um, I think for right now we'll leave it six oh six Manitou Ave until, uh, Pinnacle Consultants will take over. If that's okay with everyone, uh, Roy, Kristen, Elena, if you guys are okay with that, that's
Same, Karen.
That we can go forward with that. Thank you, Elena, I saw that. Okay. Alright, then, uh, I think we are through everything. Um, is there any public comment? Is there public with us? And if not, is there anything else from anyone else? Alright, uh, thanks everyone for being here and for your support. I appreciate you all. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
See you next month.